Hi Rob.
Oh, welcome. Is there a mouse somewhere?
It's just touchscreen. Yeah. I think it's just like a TV that displays what's on there.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, too. Yeah, okay, because then somebody else was controlling the box.
Okay, well, I suppose we'll get started here. Hello, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 13th Planning Commission meeting. This evening, we have a study session, so we will get right into it. Sir, Jennifer, you want to kick it off?
I feel like I should let Sherry kick this off. But our only thing on the agenda today is a study session. A sort of training for the Planning Commissioners and David for this training. I'm updating your community association, Colorado Chapter, a conference that we have this fall. And that would be really ideas to be coming and provided for the rest of the commissioners to hear. So, and we do, just even though we have Reed and Mike on Zoom, so we're kind of in a hundred meetings this evening, so Reed will chime in if Andy leads us astray in any way. So with that, I think we probably just turn it over to Andy, if that's okay?
Sure. Yeah, I believe Robin's also on.
Oh, yes, yes. Do you want to do a task to make sure they can hear us?
Sure. Sherry, sorry to interrupt. We have to restart this up here. We're having some audio issues, so we got to restart here in probably about two minutes. Does that work?
Yeah, we could wait.
I've got half a dozen people been to my house in the last, I guess, we've waited until we signed petition. The video was actually story. They want the city council to reverse the decision that allowed to go through. Yeah. Well, I live in South Park, which is like just off the road, right? Hopefully, all the commissioners can join us at Jake's after this for a new year. And I heard Jake's face. IT and everybody is able to click again. Okay. So we are ready. I think we wanted to test to make sure that the virtual participants are on and available. I just wanted to review how we did that.
It's exclusive call.
Reed and Mike, can you hear us? Or Robin? Tyler, I don't think we're connected back to Zoom. He said one minute.
Give him another minute.
I feel like I need to play Jeopardy music. Okay, I think we have a thumbs up from Tyler. So Reed, Robin, and Mike, can you put your video on and test your audio and microphone?
I don't see my video, so if you all can hear me.
We can totally hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
And I apologize for not being in person. Had some Ebola strike my household and probably not something that anyone else needs to be around, so.
Great, we can see you now.
Tyler, we probably need to adjust the volume a little bit. It's really loud.
But yes, we can get going, and so I'll re-kick off the meeting here at 6:39. Welcome to the Planning Commission Study Session of December 13th, the last one of the year. So we have a very interesting presentation from Dola tonight, and I'd like to go ahead and kick that off with an intro. Jennifer, I think you were first.
Excellent, yes. Sorry, a little bit of Groundhog Day here. So we do have Andy Hill with Dola, and I'll let you give your title when she steps up, but she offered a training at the APA Conference this fall, the American Planning Association Colorado Chapter Conference, that both David and Sherry, Commissioner Bolt and Commissioner Allman, attended. And then Commissioner Allman worked with Andy to bring her here to you all. So thank you, Commissioner Allman, for doing that. So tonight is a study session, kind of an educational training. We also have Reed and Mike, as you just saw, online, as well as Robin. Hi, Robin. So Reed will chime in as well, probably at various points, as Andy is doing the presentation. But this is the only thing we have on the agenda, and Andy did inform me, she's planning on about two hours with questions, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay, including at home? Or do I need to really speak into the mic? I need to speak into the mic? Okay, darn it. All right, I'll try not to move around too much. All right, so thank you again for inviting Dola. The hope was that Casey McPherson is our lead senior planner, and she normally gives these, but she has a little, little one at home and is trying to avoid in-person trainings. So Kristi Wiseman, from the training that day, Sherry was going to come. She had a family emergency, so it's just me. I'll try to, you know, jazz it up a little bit, but you'll, you know, we have some scenario questions that I think will make it, keep it moving and keep it interesting and give you a chance to talk as a group. So I'll just, I guess, start by introducing myself a little bit more. I manage the Community Development Office, which is a small team in Department of Local Affairs that provides technical and financial assistance on general planning, downtown revitalization, and sort of similar community and economic development issues. And thank you for inviting me. This is fun. I do these all over the state, and I've worked for Dola for about 25 years, and I've only one other time offered one in the community in which I live, so it's kind of fun to be able to do that. So yeah, the training is about two hours. I say about because it depends on how much discussion we have on the scenario questions. And, you know, also how much discussion you guys have. I make you something up that you want to really talk about together because it brings up something that's happened in the past and you want to better understand it. I'll also just mention that I am not an attorney, so none of this is legal advice, and even more importantly, I'm not your attorney. So I'm actually really happy to have Reed on the phone because, you know, most of our comments are very general so that they apply to most communities in the state. And so each community does things just a little differently in process or in the way, you know, the regulations that they adopt or things like that. So remember that, you know, what I'm giving is general, and if I raise a question for you, you have staff here to help say, wait, can you clarify? So please, please do that. And, you know, offer your own experiences as well. So I've introduced myself a little bit, and here's our agenda. I wonder if you could just very quickly tell me your names and how long you've been on the Planning Commission? I have a vague sense, but it would help me to recap.
Nine years? How am I looking at you?
Turn your back down.
Yeah, please put your mics in.
So nine years?
Nine years plus.
Okay.
Dave McFadden, just since April of 2021.
Okay, great.
Sherry Allman, I think I'm in my fifth year, second year, first year, second year.
Wonderful.
Craig Coronado, Chair. I'm also, I've worked for Denver Parks and Recreation. I'm a landscape architect, and this is my second stint on Planning Commission. I was on from 2010 to 2013, and then again since 2017, so about six years.
Great.
Jason Reynolds, I've been on the Planning Commission for about six years.
Wonderful.
Dan Miller, I've been on Planning Commission, I think, plus or minus five years.
Okay.
Bruce Stallman, and yes, I've been on, working on six years.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, guys. So that gives me an idea. I might, I'm going to still try to keep it a little bit more basic because we do have somebody who's a little bit newer.
I'm sorry, we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Pardon me. Yes.
That's okay. I'm happy to be back here in the background. So came on same time as Jason, so about six years.
Wonderful, thank you. Thanks for interrupting me, appreciate it. All right, so I may, I may make some comments that are fairly general, but hopefully they're, they will help you kind of think through, too, a little bit about how you describe your role to others. I don't know if you've been asked the question, "Planning Commission, huh? So what does that mean?" Or better yet, "What gives you the right to tell me what I can and can't do with my property?" And you need to kind of have your own spiel already about how to explain the value, the purpose, and frankly, the responsibility that you have in this position. So these are the things that we'll cover today, and, you know, I'll try to speed through them as quickly as I can so that we have time for discussion, but stop me if I go too fast. But before we do, I'm going to subject you to a quick, painless commercial. And this is about our department, and mostly, just so you know what we do and don't do. We do get questions sometimes. People, especially that are new to Colorado, will ask, you know, "What's the state's zoning say for Littleton? What can I do?" You know, it doesn't work that way in Colorado. It's a local control state, as you know, and so I like to just brief people a little bit on what our department does do. And so specifically in planning, in our team, Community Development Office, as I mentioned, we do provide some grants and technical assistance and training on various topics that intersect with planning. And we have a bunch of information on our website that's really designed, frankly, for planning commissioners. That's the area that we focus on because most other organizations don't, so we're trying to fill that gap. So in particular, we have a Planning Commissioners page where we have all kinds of real quick-hit, kind of high-level summary documents, and we'll continue to try to update those as we can. We do do a local government land use survey, and we are hoping to get that just under the wire, published from the 2020 survey published this year. Got a little bit behind with the pandemic, but we'll get that out soon, and that will give you a rich dataset to look and compare what do other communities similar to Littleton adopt and what strategies do they use. We also have different guidance documents, including this Downtown Streets Guide and this Planning for Hazards Guide, lots of different guides to help you guys do your job and help your staff do your job, and hopefully spend a little less time on research. So this Planning for Hazards Guide is pretty killer. It's got all kinds of like cut and paste, sample ordinance and policy language, and we just love it. We've been really thrilled with the results. Okay, so show of hands, how many of you are data geeks? You really enjoy the data. Okay, there's always a few. Oh, wow, most of you. Wow, that never happens. That's great. Okay, so data geeks, if you, you probably already know about the State Demography Office, also in Dola. They have this nifty tool, if you haven't been on their website lately, where they provide demographic profiles for communities. And I don't know, have you guys seen this before? Does this look familiar to some, not others? You know, it's interesting, it's easy to follow, even I can do it. You just kind of type in your municipality and it'll do a little profile for you and give you all kinds of tables and charts and graphics and on all different kinds of information. And they also have some narrative, and if you're unsure if the data is accurate, you invite them to come talk to your staff, and they'll reexamine their data and look at some of your data and fix it. They can also explain a little bit about some of the trends and projections, and they do a ton of presentations, and they are amazing, if you haven't seen them already. So I just put a few up here so you get an idea of the types of data that you can have access to, and I think it's really instructive, especially if you're going through a comp plan update or a code update, which you just did both of those. But just in that long-range planning mode that you're often in as planning commissioners, thinking ahead to the future, what's coming down the pike? What do the trends show us? It's always good to sort of steep your policy in data. So there's some great information on there, and I thought this one was interesting, so I just pulled it out. This is the, sort of gives you an idea of your commuter shed a little bit, or, you know, basically that blue circle, that's how many people work in Littleton, and the yellow circle is how many people actually live here. The little section in between, of course, is how many people are lucky enough to live and work here, which frankly is the goal, right? So the bigger that work here is or live here is, the more traffic congestion, air quality. Sometimes you'll see impacts like, you know, impacts on daycare needs and things like that. So that's an interesting tell for the, for you guys to think about and think about what policies or regulations or standards you have that might be impacting that. We also, they also have, of course, been just embroiled in the census updates, and will continue to put new data out as they go. So that was the quick and painless commercial. Hopefully, it was, in fact, quick and painless. Any questions before I dive in? Okay. All right, so I'm going to start with the why plan, because I don't know, how many of you have gotten that question? Like, why are we doing this? This is a waste of money. What, what gives you the right? Those kinds of questions. So these slides are geared toward helping you answer that question, and if you have something to add that you don't see, please tell me so I can add it to this slide. So, you know, the way we talk about it is, it helps government be more efficient and effective, right? Helps you seize opportunities, prevents that undesirable development, hopefully, with, you know, if we're doing our jobs right. And just like businesses would, nobody would ever start a business without having done a business plan, same thing for government. We want to make sure that we're being held accountable and that we are efficient and effective with taxpayer dollars, and so you want to have a plan for how your community is going to implement its, its vision for its future. And a great way to do that is a comprehensive plan, which we'll talk about soon, and I know you guys have just gone through that, so that's exciting. As far as authority, you do have the authority, and in fact, the responsibility to plan, not just for today's citizens and residents, but for the public of the future, future Littleton public. And so that power is reserved to states and granted to you in the state statutes, and then your local charter. And I, is it Littleton's Home Rule, is that right? And so I don't remember if we have land use stuff in the charter as well. Not sure. Most, most charters don't really do add a lot on land use, but some do, so that's something you could look at.
We have certain, hey, Andy, it's Reed. We have certain restrictions within our charter that our citizens have enacted over the years, but generally, it's, it's pretty, pretty vague, but there's, there's a few kind of nuanced sections.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. So, you know, the statutes really give you a lot of what we call enabling authority. You don't have to do a lot of it. We'll talk about the some that are required. But as I mentioned, it's, it's a local control state. There are a few planning requirements, but not too many. And as far as, you know, making sure you don't exceed your authority or go too far, I don't know if you've ever been in a situation where you feel like, I don't know, this standard or this regulation that we have just doesn't feel right, maybe it's not implementing the way you expected, or you're not sure if it's fair, you're getting a lot of heat from people telling you that it's not fair. In my mind, this is your test. If your regulations are tied to a valid public purpose, that's the first big thing. Is there a valid public purpose for that regulation? And have you been giving people a meaningful opportunity to participate in the development of that standard or policy? Then you are meeting due process, you are being fair, you are actually protecting the health, safety, and welfare through that regulation. So that's just a little test for you to kind of keep in the back of your mind. As far as what's statutorily required, municipalities do have to have a, sorry, municipalities and counties do have to have a master plan or a comprehensive plan. Most folks use them interchangeably, and the term of practice is comprehensive plan because we figured out a long time ago that those are only actually helpful if they realize how comprehensive they need to be to be effective. And then municipalities are required to have a three-mile plan before they annex. And then there isn't a requirement that you address water in your comp plan, but if you do address water in your comp plan, there's a new law, relatively new law, that spells out exactly how you do that. So that's very high level. Let's dive into roles just for a minute. All right, so elected officials. What is the council's role? The council's role is to make policy and legislate, to use their enabling authority, to hire staff and appoint boards that are going to further their mission. And by the way, not how do you further the mission? You communicate that mission. You do that two-way communication with your appointed boards to really get a sense for, to share a sense for where you're going and also hear from your boards how that's working. And so that two-way communication is really helpful to make sure that you guys are always on the same page. The Planning Commission, as you know, it's appointed, it's not elected, and, and you are advisory to the elected board. So your job is to prepare and adopt a comprehensive plan, to apply current policies and regs. I'm sure sometimes you get pressure from folks coming up here and testifying, they want you to change the rules. That's beyond your scope of authority, right? All, all you really need to do is focus on implementing the standards and rules and policies that you have in place. So reviewing development applications, adopting, consistently use your bylaws. And, you know, I really like the second to last bullet. So the elected board focuses on a variety of topics, as you know. And the Planning Commission, I love to say, you just focus on planning. That's like a full-time job. Just focusing on planning and doing a really thorough job is very important. And in fact, I was in Mesa County doing one of these last week, and Mesa County, their Planning Commission told me, and in fact, their county commissioner was there before and said, you know, they love, in Mesa County, they love their Planning Commission because the Planning Commission is thorough, they ask all the questions, they really do their due diligence and take their role very seriously. And he said it gave the county commissioners confidence and comfort knowing that that work had been done. They had seen, they had set that expectation really pretty high. And so the county commissioners felt very comfortable and confident with decisions because they knew the Planning Commission had really dug in and done their work. And I just loved hearing that because I think all planning commissions want to know that. They want to know that the time that they're spending and investing, which is significant, is really relied upon. So to that end, every time you, I don't know if this has happened to you, but most people sort of nod their head. Have you ever been in a position where you've had to approve something you really didn't like? Or you had to deny something you really thought would be good for the city? Those are the times you take note. You know, you've got a notebook, take, see, I'm so old school, you've got a pen and paper, but, you know, take notes and, and make a note, "That standard didn't work like we thought it would in this case." Or I'd like to explore with staff how to, you know, maybe look at the standard differently or look at this rule differently, or this district doesn't work anymore, we're seeing this new problem. Whatever it is, take some notes and then talk to staff about it and see what you might be able to do with some research and some discussion at a study session to be able to recommend maybe some improvements to the council in the future. to be able to recommend maybe some improvements to the council in the future. I think that's a really valuable role for the planning commission, because you are taking time and focus to really look at how are the planning policies and rules actually working to implement your vision or your comp plan. And then finally, I'll just mention support staff. I've been in Littleton, so I know you guys do this. But we do see often, you know, staff get scapegoated or they get yelled at by folks in the room. And it's just so nice when we see council or planning commission members stick up for staff and really keep that professional decorum in the room. So, I always try to mention that. And then the role of staff. The role of staff is really to be there for you as your resource, your technical resource. So, you go to them with questions, they can assist you with research. Of course, they provide you with a staff report. Not all local governments get that, so that's fantastic. It keeps the meetings running much more smoothly. And they really keep everything compliant, ensure good communication and so on. So, they are indispensable, for sure. What's the role of the citizen? The role of the citizen is to come to the last public hearing and say, this is the first I've heard of this, right? No, I'm joking. But that does happen, right? Because frankly, we all have really busy lives and some of us miss stuff. I know I have in my own city, it's very distressing. And so, you know, their job is to participate as fully as they can to provide feedback and ideas on how, when they think things aren't working, ideas they have on how to make them work and just continue to be present. And I think having that presence really keeps all of us focused and on our toes and honest and that's a good, that's a good pressure to add. And especially this next one, applicants. You know, applicants, developers, folks who use your system, the users of your PRS Development Review Process are also great resources for ideas, because they use your system, they know it quite well. And they can give you really good feedback on what's working, not working, unintended consequences and so on. And my guess is that you probably consulted some of those in the land use code update. I know most communities do, it's really helpful to hear from them directly. So, how long does it take to get through the process? And how much does it cost? And what kind of shortcuts have you found? And what should we know about our process? Those are great questions to get answers from that group, as well as the citizens who come and watch and observe and see the trends maybe differently than we do. One thing we do see with applicants, I doubt you see it as much here. I definitely see it in more rural parts of the state, is that they tend to work the system. They might come to staff at the last minute with changes. That's not, that's not how an efficient and effective system works. And so, we just ask applicants to have realistic expectations, follow the rules, follow the process. And you know, frankly, that second bullet is the key. They need to be able to expect a fair and predictable process. And most developers have told us, your fees can be whatever, your process can be whatever, but as long as it's fair and predictable, then I know whether or not I'm going to take the gamble of going through the process, right? So, if it's fair and predictable, they will deal with a lot of stuff that they might complain about. They'll deal with actually quite a bit, because they know how to develop their pro forma if they know what the steps are and they know what the likely outcome will be. All right, so, I'm going through this first part fast because it's basic and most of you have been around a long time. But I guess my final takeaway here is, you know, things get busy, especially when things are crazy with development review and lots of long-range planning projects. And so, I just encourage you to slow down every now and then, take time to reflect together on what's been working, what's not been working, what are you frustrated with, what do you need more of from staff? What kind of guidance might you need from council? And have that discussion with staff and see, you know, there might be an opportunity to have a check-in with the elected board once a year to sort of check in and see, how are we doing? Are we on the same page? What issues have been coming up, things like that? All right, so, like I said, I went through that a little bit fast. Let's go to the first scenario question. All right, so the planning commission makes a unanimous decision, but the, I'm sorry, in this case, it would be council overturns it. In fact, this happens a lot. So, what actions could the planning commission take to address their concern about being overturned? I don't know if this is an issue here, but this happens to the smoothest-running municipalities. Every municipality and county, I feel like, runs into phases where this happens. And that's very normal. So, do you talk with staff for feedback? Ask for check-ins with the council? Do you call the mayor? Do you attend the town board's next public meeting and raise the issue for discussion? Or my favorite, post a letter on social media complaining about it? All right. Well, I don't know how brave you guys all feel. Please? Oh, picket's right. So, obviously, you know, we encourage A. We encourage you to talk, start with staff, see what you can find out, see if there's an opportunity for some kind of joint meeting, if that would be an appropriate and effective next step. So, that's just some thoughts for background. Okay. That was a fun little intro. We'll have a lot more scenario discussion questions coming up. So, let's talk a little bit about sort of the long-range planning overview of your work. So, first of all, you start with your vision for how you want your community to grow, develop and change over time. And you articulate that in your comprehensive plan through lots of community engagement, which you already know. And then, you stop, right? You did it, you're done. That was hard, took two years probably, right? Most communities, two, three years to a comp plan. That's actually when the work actually really begins, as you also know, because you actually have to implement that plan and that vision. The policy statements are great. And if they're done well, they lead you right to the tools that you're going to use to adopt and implement those policies. But, you know, there are a lot of different options and there are a lot of different strategies you can use, including annexation policies and IGAs and zoning and so on. But every good comp plan is implemented with a variety of tools that respond to what the community wants and what the community will support. And what you've effectively been able to get the community to understand and support too, with their buy-in, with their feedback. So, as you know, the comprehensive plan is your community's vision. It's your roadmap for the future. It's hopefully given you a great idea of the steps you're going to have to take over time to implement that vision. Standard plan elements, I'll skip through this quickly. Recreation and tourism is required by state statute, water is not. But if it is, as I mentioned, there are some, there's some guidance language in the statutes that talk about, all right, make sure you talk with your wider water provider and identify water supplies and things like that. And I'm sorry, Jennifer, I can't remember. Did you guys address water in your comp plan? Maybe not this time.
Not in detail, it was part of the infrastructure section.
Okay. I thought I remembered some language, but I couldn't remember. So, if this is something that you guys want to look into more, come talk to us and there's resources. Kristi Wiseman is our land use and water planner and would love to talk to you about the different resources that are available. Okay, how do we now want to try to conserve water or, you know, other strategies? Okay. So, comprehensive plan, a good comp plan is implemented by your land use code and other incentives and strategies. But it also provides guidance every time you get a rezoning request or, you know, any kind of incentive program that you might have at the city. It should help guide you on decisions about locating new infrastructure or expanding major infrastructure. And it should correlate or align nicely with a bunch of different sub-area plans that you already have. And this is where it can get a little tricky, because you can have a lot of different plans and most of the time, they align beautifully. But sometimes they do have conflicting statements. And so, it's, I think, an interesting exercise when you have time to go through and see, is that creating any problems for the city? But it's important to just know that these other kinds of plans often exist in communities and play an important role. And the one I'll mention, just based on where you guys are at, is the capital improvement plan. So, how many of you have looked at your capital improvement plan or your budget in detail? Either one? So impressive, okay, great. So, that capital improvement plan really shows you, you know, we just went through this comp plan, we said we wanted these things. Does the capital improvement plan show that? Do we need to do catch-up on that? And, you know, you guys are lucky, you have a lot of staff who's got their eyes on that prize. But, you know, that's something that you guys might be able to help support as well. I have a three-mile plan slide in here, but I'm not sure it's necessarily as relevant for Littleton. So, I left it in just in case there are questions. But I think that's probably addressed in your comprehensive plan. If you do have questions, I'm happy to explain it more. Cooperative planning, so I don't know, do you guys get questions? Or do you see issues where a developer might come to you and say, well, gosh, we'd like to do this in your city. We'd like to be able to offer this development in your city, but Inglewood is going to do it for, they're going to let us do it there at a higher density and lower fees. Do you ever get that?
On the staff level.
Just the staff level. Okay. So, we talked to planning commissions a lot and council members a lot about cooperative planning, because that does happen, right? I mean, they're doing their job, frankly. They're looking for their best interest and making sure that their project has its best chance to succeed. And so, if we as communities don't want to get played off of each other, then we do our homework and work closely with our neighboring municipalities and the county. And I think you guys do a little bit of that already, right?
Yeah, the choice that is coalition.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, well, let's go on to this next slide about trends. So, what we're seeing, as far as trends and key issues in planning, a lot of communities are planning for that aging demographic. And I'm sure you've seen your data on this. Littleton is like a lot of other cities where that aging demographic is getting larger and larger and we have to think about how we're going to address that so that we live in a municipality that, you know, is, where all ages can thrive, basically. I know people don't like age-friendly terminology very much, but... And then, you know, there are a lot of communities thinking about the public health outcomes, many unintended or just not even considered, based on how we develop our communities. How easy is it to get around on, you know, walking and biking? And then, just general quality of life, as well as hazards. Seen a lot on hazards planning and integrating that into comp plans and land use codes. Definitely, we're seeing more and more on water supply and water quality. And obviously, affordable housing. I think every community in Colorado right now is dealing with affordable, quality housing. Also, we're seeing a lot of communities really think about economic diversification and the role of planning in that. Inclusive public engagement and the equity impact analyses of different policies and regulations. So, it's been interesting to watch communities go through this and come up with different priorities. One that we're really interested in at DOLA right now is the long-term fiscal health impacts of our development patterns. So, a lot of communities that have set themselves up to sort of sprawl out at a gentle density have found over the decades that it's hard to afford to maintain providing services to those homes at that density. And that's just generally because lower-density residential development does not pay for itself. That's just the nature of that development. And that's okay. You come up with a mix of development types so that you can afford to provide services over time and a mix of different revenue sources. I think, you know, the study that RIFLE did years ago, I think, is really interesting. They found that if they focused a little bit more on infill areas and increased the density slightly, they would save 31% in infrastructure costs over time. And that's a big chunk of money. So, they did that. And once they started doing that, along with some other focusing efforts on their downtown, they really saw quite a shift in the types of businesses that they started to attract. And so, it was actually really interesting to see. They were striving for what Littleton already has in their downtown. So, that's kind of nice to see too. And this is just an example. I don't know if you guys have seen Joe Minicozzi. There are a lot of folks that have, that, you know, talk about the same kind of thing. So, there's, you know, basically, it's about analysis of sort of smart growth development, if you will. But I thought it was really interesting when he looked at this development pattern that you saw typically in the 1920s and 40s, which we have plenty of in Littleton, versus, you know, sort of the long-term fiscal impacts of development patterns typically built in the 70s. And you can see on the chart there just how much more expensive generally those more gentle-density, you know, suburban neighborhoods, just how much more those tend to cost. So, I just kind of put that up there for you guys to think about in the back of your mind. Okay, I'm going to check in time. So, another trend that we're seeing and we're happy to see and we want to learn more about from communities is communities that are focusing on how to become more engaged with diverse neighborhoods, how to really think about how their policies and programs affect equity and how to be more inclusive in their public engagement. And I think that last one especially is a big one for this group, because you do engage the community quite a bit, not just in development review, but in your long-range planning, like you just did. And so, I think this is an interesting chart that I don't actually have time to go through today, but I invite you to look at and think about and maybe talk together at a future work session about how you're providing more equity instead of equality, right? So, it's, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of progress made by a lot of communities to do some, you know, just different ways to reach out to different neighborhoods, both through online platforms and different kinds of public engagement, which we can talk about more. I'm trying to shorten it and I'm intending to go longer, so I apologize. Okay, any questions on that before I get into meetings and decision-making? All right. Okay, well, this one, I think, meetings and decision-making, we do every time we meet, right? So, this one, we tend to spend a little bit more time on and I'll slow down a little bit more, because I think this one is so relatable, even if you've only been to one meeting. So, you know, it's good to have some professional decorum like this, because for a lot of reasons. We need a little bit of a barrier to remind us that we're in a professional environment, where we need to be civil. But it can go too far. We definitely don't want meetings like this, because no one's going to want to stand here and communicate to you. We also don't want them so friendly and easygoing. So, a little formality is good. I know some smaller communities hate the formality, they hate this division. They want to be close to people in their community and they've gotten run over sometimes by friends, you know, just that are using the process and feeling frustrated. So, a little bit of decorum is really good. It keeps things a little cleaner and it keeps things from going here. So, how many of us have been at this meeting? I think I've been at this meeting a few times. It's painful. And so, we'll talk about a few tips that will help us avoid getting here. Before I dive into the different approaches and tips, I want to just kind of put a, set the context. When you're working as a planning commissioner, you're always wearing one of two different hats. You're either wearing your legislative hat or you're wearing your quasi-judicial hat. And why does it matter? When you're wearing your legislative hat, and here's the definition, basically, you're updating your comp plan or you're looking at your land use code. You're making decisions about things, and this is generally the council's job, but you are engaged in this as well. You're not taking your standards and applying them to one individual applicant. So, that is a quasi-judicial role. When you're sitting up here for development review and you're in a public hearing, that's usually going to be a quasi-judicial role. And why that matters is because there's a higher level of due process that you need to protect. So, let's get into that a little bit. For general public meetings, you're wearing that legislative hat. You want to invite people to come, you want to explain, you want to convince them to come to the meetings or to participate, giving feedback online. You can talk to anybody, anywhere, at the grocery store, here in this room. It doesn't matter where. But you're trying to get the community engaged to create policy of a permanent or general character widely applicable. So, you're championing land use in your community. You're trying to be inclusive in your public participation. Tips that we usually provide, make sure you start any of those meetings that you guys are running, just reminding everybody, I mean, everybody up here already knows, but everybody back here doesn't usually know, or everyone online doesn't always know, the context, where you're at in the process, why this meeting matters, how it relates to other things that you're doing. And even taking 30 seconds to give that context can help people understand a little bit more what's relevant for them to bring up, why. And most folks pay attention just enough to get here. You know, everybody has such busy lives. So the more you can do to explain and provide that big picture, explain why it's relevant, limit the jargon, the acronyms, help make it relevant to them, the better outcome you'll have. And frankly, the more support you'll be able to, to build. And then the final note, remain courteous no matter what. I'm, I'm sure you've seen your share of upset, frustrated, and sometimes frankly, even ugly emotions right here in this room. And so, it's hard sometimes, especially when you're feeling personally attacked, to remain courteous. And so, you know, just try to help each other out, support each other, stick up for each other, and, and, you know, kind of keep that cool. Because then, once we lose it, that really sets it all off, right? Okay, in public hearings, when you're wearing that quasi-judicial hat, you want to make sure you're protecting due process. So there are some different rules that apply, just like you would expect different rules would apply in a courtroom, right? So, of course, you have to provide notice. You have to give people the opportunity to be heard. And let's, let's just talk a little bit for a minute about what makes a meeting effective. So obviously, a meeting is effective if everyone had a meaningful opportunity to participate. And some folks will say, "Well, then, if we really want to give people a meaningful opportunity to participate, why do we limit them to three minutes so often?" Most communities limit to three minutes. Some communities do math at the beginning of every meeting. They'll say, "All right, we've got this much time, this much on the agenda. There's this many people here, so everybody gets two minutes, four minutes, whatever the math is." I think most folks find that a little frustrating. They want to know, "What's it gonna be? Because I want to plan and prep." And so I think a lot of communities just go with a time limit. And so, some people feel like, "Well, that's not a meaningful opportunity to participate. I can't, I can't tell you exactly how I feel about this project and why it matters in three minutes." But it's, but it's also, there's a line there, right? I, I know some communities have said, I think it was Delta years ago that said, "We make no good decisions past 10:00 PM," because they started early, like five or something. So they just stopped all their meetings at 10:00 PM, period. Didn't matter where they were at. And I, I don't know if, I don't think they're still doing that anymore, but I liked where they were going. Sort of this realization that, you know, you can try to be as open and inclusive and give everybody as much time as they want, but at some point, you'll hit that realistic threshold of how long you can sit here and hear things and think and process and make a good, informed decision. You know, at some point, you do get tired and worn down. So, you know, I think the, the basic takeaway here is to just be consistent. Whatever standards you adopt, be consistent. From the little bit that I've seen, you guys definitely all do that. So, as long as, generally, as long as people feel they were heard, even if they only have three minutes, they see you nodding. They see that, you know, you maybe discussed something that that person raised later. They know they were heard, that's what matters most. Another thing that makes meetings effective, and this one seems so obvious and it's so easy to lose, especially when we're deep in the weeds of those big packets you get, right? Relevant issues are addressed in effective meetings. And I'll just tell you a quick story on this one. So there was a, there was a community in the North Front Range, very environmentally focused. And they were having quite a lengthy discussion, the planning commission, with an applicant who wanted to open a restaurant about the pros and cons of cloth napkins. And at some point, I think it was one of the planning commissioners, I can't remember now, somebody said, "Hold up, we don't have any adopted standards that will require a restaurant to have or not have a cloth napkin. So we are totally out of line. We are down a rabbit hole. That's an exciting topic, and I'm sure everyone's very passionate. That's not our role." And I think, you know, it's funny kind of to laugh about that one, but we all have that pet issue, right? And so, you know, I think the, the most important thing here is to think about, every time, basically, you're about to ask a question, think. Am I asking this, in asking this question, am I gonna get to the question I have to answer, which is, "Does this application before us meet our standards?" That's always the bottom line. Are we doing that? Are we following our process? If so, then you're doing your job very, very well. And, you know, 90% of the time, maybe 99% of the time, we do that, but all of us fall prey to the going off track, and that's okay, that happens. Rely on staff, rely on each other to bring ourselves back to, "Does this project meet our standards?" Another thing that makes meetings effective is starting with a staff report, staying organized, and making sure that your decision is clear. So, you know, the staff report probably says, you know, if a project meets the standards, if there needs to be conditions, right? And it will say whether or not it's met the comp plan and the different standards and regs, and that's great. Deliberate on the ones where you're not sure. So deliberate on the issues where you're not sure if that project meets your standards, but on the rest where it's obvious that it does, you don't have to go into that quite a bit. You can say, "I agree with the staff report, and on these, I have questions." So deliberate and ask questions about where you're unsure on criteria, not just so that you are better understanding, but so that everyone else in the room, including the applicant, including people who show up to testify, also understand how and why you're making the decision that you make. Frankly, most people think that you make a decision on an application based on whether or not you like the guy, whether or not you like the project, whether or not you like that building. You know, people make assumptions, and I don't think most people realize, no, you really do have these standards that you have to, that each project has to follow. And if you go astray from that, you could be sued. You could set a precedent. There's all kinds of problems that could come from that. So the more you discuss that as a group, I think it's really helpful to people to understand why the decision was made and, and it will show that it's defensible. And I think I already mentioned the explanatory opener. There have been some planning commissions, I think, do a great job of just, the chair starts every meeting with the same sort of introduction. This is how you participate. This is how we make our decisions, this, you know, material's in the back. And so, I think that helps ground people and give them a little bit of predictability about how the process is going to work, and hopefully calms some people down, and that can be helpful, too, to making sure that meetings are effective and not too emotional. So stop me at any time. I'm gonna go on now to the chair. So the role of the chair, a strong chair obviously helps make meetings effective. And we love seeing strong chairs, because those are the really stable, strong planning commissions, because the, the chair is really acting as an air-traffic controller the whole time. You know, we're all involved in the conversation, as is the chair, but the chair's also looking toward the next thing. "All right, it's this time, we've got this on the agenda. Feels like we've discussed this standard or this issue. I think we're gonna need to call for a motion soon." You know, they're thinking a little bit ahead. And so, you know, keep that in mind, that that's what your chair is probably trying to do all the time. And you can also help with that, if you feel like, you know, you want to ask a question. "Hey, is, do we, could we move to a motion?" You can do that as well. The chair is human and sometimes needs support or backup. But a good chair is a great communicator, sets the right tone, civil, professional, calm, strong listener, nods, you know, does all those things that I think we all try to do our best. Definitely tries to keep an eye on the clock and enforces the rules consistently. And I'm not sure, I have this bit at the bottom, because we see this in some smaller communities especially, but have you ever had the situation where somebody in the back just tries to take over the meeting? They want to ask for a vote, or they start firing out questions, and it's not even time for the public hearing piece yet, or anything like that? Do you get that sometimes?
Yeah, we, we have had situations where there's a large group and cheering or booing, you know, that type of thing.
Yep, love it. All right, well, so that can be really difficult for a chair to handle, because you're just one person. And what I've seen work really well is when there's a buddy system, when the chair has somebody else that will back them up. And maybe you already have that system, I don't know. But I know in some communities, there's sort of a dynamic duo that, when needed, can be called upon to sort of reinforce some of those requests that you'll make. And staff, too, will do that. All right, a little bit more. This is just a helpful little cue. I don't know if you use this trick, but I love this one. "Okay, we're on item two of six, and it's nine o'clock." That's really good, right? Everybody starts doing the math. They're like, "Oh, oh, I need to get home and watch The Bachelor. We better get this moving." All right. Okay, so let's talk for just a moment about common hurdles and mistakes. Not being prepared, it's so boring, right? But it's, it's the obvious one. Most folks who volunteer to do what you're doing are doing 10 other things as well. And that's just the way it works, right? So you're already really busy. You've added this to your plate, so you're even busier. And now you've got to read this packet before tomorrow night, and, you know, your kid is up sick all night, or whatever the reason, right? And so, not being prepared is a really common hurdle. And if you are in that position, I just encourage you to talk to staff, let them know, see what you might be able to do. Another one we see a ton of is not asking enough questions. And I have my own theory on why this is. It's, it can be embarrassing, frankly, to be up there and be worried that the question that you need to ask is too obvious or is gonna make you look silly or stupid. And so, most people just don't ask questions. They just wait and hope somebody else asks it. I know I personally have been relieved when someone asks a question I was just wondering. So ask the questions. Half the time, I feel like there's at least one or two other people that are wondering the same thing. Yes?
The, the way I look at it is, I just want it on the record.
That's a great, great comment.
Maybe it's a dumb question, but it's gotta be asked, because it's gotta be on the record.
That's a great comment, thank you. Yep, that's a good point.
Kind of a backup to Dave is not just being on the record, but to, you know, verify what somebody else said or make sure that it's understood. So yes, that question, knowing well what the answer is, but you want the audience or other commissioners to hear it.
Oh, that's good. Right, gets you all on the same page. So I, I love that, thank you. Asking for a vote of the audience. You know, I just want to pause on this one, because you kind of set it, set me up nicely for this. So have you gotten the person yet that stands up? You can see them just fuming the whole meeting, and you can tell they can't take it anymore. So they stand up and they say, "Look, I'm gonna save y'all a lot of time. See all these 500 people that are sitting here angry? They all don't like this project. In fact, lo, look, we'll just take a vote. Everybody, let's take a vote. How many people hate this project and think it should be denied?" I have actually seen that happen, and it is so uncomfortable. And you can usually see, the board member's eyes are like, "Wait, did they just do that out? Did they say that?" So I don't know if you've had this happen yet, hopefully not. Okay. That is not how this works, right? No, that's, the only thing worse to see, and I've also seen this, is when a very well-intentioned planning commissioner says, maybe they're just not confident. They want to know what people in the room think, so they ask for a vote. And that's a lot of fun, because then your fellow planning commissioners are like, "No, we don't want to do that. We don't want to ask for a vote, because we don't, that's not how this decision ultimately will be made or defended well." So, I mean, that's kind of an extreme example, but there are all kinds of subtle moves that are similar to that in nature. And you taught, you mentioned a couple of them. You know, another hurdle and mistake that I've seen and had planning commissioners tell me is bias. And, you know, I've had some planning commissioners tell me they're worried about saying the wrong thing before an application comes to the, to the hearing. Or maybe you show up a little bit early, and so you're kind of standing around talking before everyone gets here, and I might say to you, "Gosh, did you read the packet? There's no way. There's no way we can approve this. It doesn't meet any of our standards." And someone in the audience, and they hear that, and they think, "Oh, great, she's already made up her mind." Fantastic, that's how this works, huh? So showing bias, however innocent, is really detrimental to the, to the process, for sure. And then, you know, the last one is very well-intentioned. Attempting to be the applicant, basically. And we see this a lot, right? You've got an idea for how to make the project better, look better, work better. Maybe you're an engineer, you're an architect, whatever. And so, you might have some really good ideas, but the public hearing is not the place for them, because you, in this role, you're the planning commission, not their architect or their engineer. And so, we do hear that from planners that represent developers and developers a lot, that they get frustrated by that sometimes, because they feel like then their expertise is diminished or devalued, or second-guessed. And so, that's a hard one. That's always, I feel like, most planning commissioners that try to help in that way, it's really well-intentioned, but tends to be frustrating, I think, for some. Another thing we see a lot of, especially for projects that are hard to get approved. And we see this in big cities, just as much as we see it in small towns. The "let's make a deal" at the end kind of a thing. So where we see this a lot, especially lately, is affordable housing projects. So I, as an affordable housing developer, will come to you and say, "All right, I've got this project. I've met all your requirements. When can I start?" And then people from the neighborhood show up and say, "Well, we don't care that they met the requirements, I still don't like it." Well, they met the requirements. You know, that's, that's the legally defensible test. So what tends to happen at the end is a little bit of horse trading. "All right, well, I know we don't have standards on this, but could you improve the facade? Could you do some additional screening? Could you do X, Y, Z extra beyond what our requirements list?" And, you know, that developer might say yes, because frankly, they don't want to have to go through the hassle of suing you, but they might just sue you, right? Like, if you don't approve the project, they might challenge that, because you're asking them to do things that exceed your authority. And so, you know, it's, it's tempting to try to get a project through and make everybody happy, but your job is not to make everybody happy. That's an impossible job, as you already know. And what's defensible in court is, "Did the project meet your standards?" Any questions on that one before I go to this? Social media? Okay, yes? Yeah, please.
Sometimes at the end, end of a presentation or discussion, we do ask or propose an exception to projects. So what's the difference? I mean, if we say, it, it's kind of like "let's make a deal" sometimes.
An exception? In what context? An exception to a standard?
To say, sometimes, you know, to the motion, to approve a project. Yeah, so, say, someone makes the motion, and then we, we say, somebody makes another, a counter-motion, whatever, that the project would be approved with the addition of da-da-da, or with the heights being this, or is that different than "let's make a deal" to me? I don't know that.
No, that's a great, thank you for explaining. Now I understand what you're saying. Yeah, so if the condition, the only time you ask for a condition is to help make sure that the project meets the standard. So something might meet all your standards except for this one little thing. So you'd say, "Why approve with the condition that you meet this standard in this way?" But if you start adding conditions that aren't grounded in your actual land use code and your regs and standards, then that's where you're going astray, because you're asking for things like the cloth napkins. You don't have a rule that asks for cloth napkins, or you don't have a rule that the screening has to be eight feet high, so you can't require it to be eight feet high. It's that kind of thing. But if you condition to six feet high, and that's what your standard says, then that's a perfectly appropriate standard. Yes?
Yeah, I think a lot of times, we have the situation where it's a, like a PD, and the applicant's already asking for all this stuff that's outside of that. They're asking for change- They're asking for changes and waivers. So we're kind of trying to decide what makes sense that's already out of the boundary. And so that's where some of that comes in, I think.
Okay. Oh, did you want to?
Reed, are you, he just said maybe on this. So we've kind of addressed this, really trying to avoid legislating from the dais is what we call it, you know, when we start to play that let's make a deal. And there is kind of this fine line. Reed, do you want to address this at all?
No. Yeah, I would say, you know, one of the things that we try to stress to all of our boards and commissions or city councils occasionally, while not to say that someone has prejudged it before a public hearing is you'll get an idea or a sense based upon some of the questions you may be hearing that someone wants to offer up an amendment or a condition for purposes of this conversation. You know, we appreciate having those upfront because it gives us an opportunity to go through kind of the information or perhaps be able to, you know, at least put it in the back of our heads that when this comes before council or planning commission or whatever board, that we're going to need to kind of hit on certain areas that maybe aren't coming forward very clearly in a staff report or something maybe we've just kind of overlooked. But yeah, generally, the kind of let's make a deal from the dais is frowned upon. You know, I don't think we're going to get into it now, but you know, when planning commission or any of our boards or commissions councils get appealed, it goes up on a 106 action, which basically is an abuse of discretion that, you know, planning commission acted arbitrarily capriciously and abused their discretion when they added certain things. So one of the hot-button topics that, you know, both nationally, state, locally is we hear a lot of talk about affordable housing. So the city of Littleton right now, we don't have any affordable housing requirements. We don't have an affordable housing policy. So I get a little concerned during some of the development agreements that have come before planning commission or city council and I start hearing questions that, well, are these going to be market rate? Are these going to be for rent? Are they going to be owner-occupied? You know, is there going to be affordable housing? Because, you know, when you speak towards, you know, when you're asking questions, make sure that they're questions that are relevant to applying that criteria. And so while I know for a fact that sustainability and certain things, affordability is going to come up in the next few months, I do get a little nervous when I see certain conditions, which I don't think necessarily go to meeting that criterion, that criterion in this case. There's basically a lot of talking for me to say, yep.
That's helpful. Thank you. You know, I think, so I really like how you said that. I even took a couple of notes there to use some of that language in the future. What I really appreciate seeing is when planning commission members aren't sure. You just ask staff, just pause a minute. They're probably like, I want to say something, but I don't want to interrupt. And by just looking at staff and asking, it gives you a moment to sort of check in. And they may say, yep, you're right on track. Yes, go with that. That helps us answer the question, does this project meet our standards? But I really appreciated Reed's comments because we do see this as an incredibly common well-intentioned abuse of power. And it just sets up the city to be challenged. And cities and counties have lost big money and time over the years from well-meaning, you know, behavior like this. Okay. All right, so, you know, let's talk about something less stressful and less contentious. Why don't we talk about Facebook, Nextdoor, social media? Does that sound like fun? Just kidding. Social media, I'm going to keep this short and sweet. Don't respond on social media, on any planning stuff, just ever. It's not, it never turns out to be helpful. You have the gift of staff. A lot of communities don't have someone who will spend time on Nextdoor putting information out. And so if you guys talk and you get guidance from staff that they want you to do this, great, go forth. But for the most part, you're opening yourselves up to all kinds of headache and hassle and potential legal and ethical trouble. So we just encourage planning commissioners, leave it to staff, let them handle it. Try to stay out of it because those vehicles can be really helpful at first and they can turn really ugly super fast. Did you have something you want to add?
Yeah, so just so you all know, so staff, we don't go on Nextdoor. We don't comment on Nextdoor. We don't comment on Facebook. That is left to communications to do any of that type of communication. So that is not something staff does either.
Communication staff.
Oh, yeah. Reed wants to add.
Oh, please.
They actually don't let us comment. They don't like government entities commenting on Nextdoor pages. So while it can be fun, and I actually do get comments about, is anyone from the city going to respond to this? Because as you know, not everything that you see on Nextdoor is true. And there's really just nobody from the city side to come in and correct them. The other thing I'll say is kind of a general rule, something to be thoughtful about, is as commissioners or even as councilpersons, is weighing in on topics that haven't come before planning commission, that may very well come before planning commission, you know, in two years, three years, five years. You know, kind of making these statements that I would never support a development there in this particular quadrant of the city. And then suddenly, three years down the road, you're still on planning commission and you have an application like that. Because that can lead to an applicant who's sophisticated enough to use that information against you to get you to recuse that you prejudged the issue. Same could be said for whatever commentary that you're putting on Nextdoor as a private citizen. Suddenly, you know, three years from now, that comes up and, yeah, can lead to issues. So I'd be kind of mindful of what we do online.
I love that. Thank you. I'll have to make sure we, I'll skip that scenario question. That's a good one.
Pardon me, could I ask one more question in that area?
Yes.
Over the last week or so, I've had several people show up at my house trying to get me to sign a petition on something, which I didn't. But none of them knew that I was on the planning commission or anything. And it already had come to our attention and we voted to recommend it. But anyway, there's so much disinformation in this person's presentation. It was just killing me. But I kept quiet. So that's what you want, right? Is, you know, Reed, is that, that's the deal, right? I just, because it's kind of a, I don't know if it's a conflict or what it is, but just keep quiet.
Yeah, generally, I mean, I don't think there's, you know, once an item has already passed planning commission, you know, you could certainly explain where you came from in terms of your vote or what your role was on planning commission. As you're likely to find, it's difficult to change people's minds when they're very impassioned about something. I guarantee you probably would have been, you would have had a difficult time convincing someone otherwise, so.
Yeah, thanks.
That's a great question.
Can I ask a question too, please? So talking about this particular petition going around, as planning commissioners, we say nothing, but we are also residents. And it was my understanding as residents, if you wanted to sign or whatever, you have that right to do so also.
Yeah, I would say.
Go ahead, Reed.
Oh, you know, simply because you've been appointed to any board or commission in the city, you don't give up your First Amendment rights to do what it is that, you know, you want to do. Sign what you need to sign. I guess a note of caution I would give to that is it could be construed that someone had prejudged the issue if they were that impassioned about it to sign it. But I think, you know, Robin, you're fine to have signed a petition if you wanted to or you're fine to have not signed the petition in that case. So yeah, you don't give up your First Amendment right simply of being a board or permission.
That's a great question. Thank you. And, you know, great advice. I agree. It's, I think you just have to do that little test in your mind. Could this come back and relate to my world later? Is this a petition that's never going to intersect with my planning commission role? Or might it intersect with my planning commission role? And then someone could say I'm biased, or someone could say I have some kind of conflict or whatever. And so, yeah, that's good advice. Thanks, Reed. I won't belabor it. Okay, I'm going to skip through these fairly quickly because you have the benefit of fantastic legal advice and planning staff to help you to make sure that the decisions you make are defensible and your procedures are defensible. But in this quasi-judicial role where you're, you know, reviewing applications and deciding whether or not they meet the standards, to protect due process, you do certain things to make sure that it's fair and transparent. And so you provide notice, you give people an opportunity to be heard. You have very clear rules. You enforce them consistently. And you lay a record of decision, your findings of fact will lay a record to explain and communicate to others how your decision was made. Also unbiased and timely decisions. I don't know that that happens much here, but we do see in some smaller communities, planning commissions will get overwhelmed or frustrated or concerned by how much opposition they're getting. And they tend to sometimes just hit the delay button, right? Postpone something. Let's just postpone it and hope that next time more people won't show up and yell at me. And so definitely to be, to have our procedures defensible, we need to make unbiased, timely decisions. Not to say if you're not ready to vote and you feel there's more information that needs to be heard, you can delay a meeting. That's certainly a possibility. It's just something that you don't want to abuse. And of course, you'll want to make sure you have complete records and staff really keeps you clear on all of this. And, you know, Reed, Reed actually really talked about some of that. So let's get into motions. How many of you are an expert at motions? Oh, there's always one guy. I love it. You're the one. There's always one person that's really good at motions, right? They're taking notes. They're like, they know exactly how to say it. So that's awesome. Thank you. And for the rest of us, we've got to keep working on that because it is hard. And it's hard when everybody's looking at you and you're tripping up on your words. But do share that pain a little bit. We have a little cheat sheet on our website. Parliamentary Procedures has got a little cheat sheet for motions. It's helpful, especially if you're new. The thing is, well-prepared motions do take effort. They can be tedious. And it's so easy to say something like, ah, it's 11:30. I move that we approve based on the conditions that we discussed. You got that, right? And staff are like, oh, no. So take the time to be tedious and communicative, to your point earlier. You want to communicate with that motion, how and why you're making your decision and what it's based on. So motions, explain to the applicant, explain to the audience how your decision was made. And, you know, they take some practice.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, that's generally why I would say if you're thinking of an amendment or a condition, that you reach out to your legal representative, or in this case, me, and I might be able to help in getting something a little bit more succinct, because what will happen a lot of times is they'll ask for the clerk to reread the motion. And the clerk is sitting there going, I have no idea just what that paragraph motion was. So putting them on notice is sometimes helpful, but I would say, talk with me and we'll get something penciled out for you.
That's good. That's so great that you guys have that help at the staff level. Because it is something that needs to be precise. And then we have some guidance on here about how to do, you know, complex motions, vote on conditions one at a time, stack it up a bit at a time rather than try to get it perfect. The paragraph he mentioned, get it that all perfect in one motion. That can be tricky. Your findings of fact, these are sort of your breadcrumbs or basically the, why am I losing my words today? Your factual foundations for whether or not you made a fair and defensible decision, your legal footprint or your breadcrumbs. And the facts have to address the standards, as I mentioned. So all the questions that you ask have to be designed to get the evidence. Does this project meet the standards? Does it conform with the comp plan? And, you know, obviously, your findings of fact go beyond just what your gut tells you. And, you know, this is important because if you do get challenged on a decision that you make, the judge isn't going to come to town and say, tell me a little bit more, sir, why you made that decision, what were you balancing, what were you thinking? And how about you? What kind of conversations? They're not going to do that. They're going to look at your record of decision. Did you follow all your procedures? Did you notice it? Did you ask questions designed to get to that, the evidence of whether or not the application meets your standards? And if you follow all those steps and rules, then they will give you the benefit of the doubt. All right, you followed your own rules. This project meets your standards. It's not my job as a judge to decide whether or not I like your rules or standards. You've adopted them and you followed them. That's basically why you want to make sure you are communicating to everyone how you're making your decision and that the decisions are made based on those standards. Don't be afraid to say, I don't know. Ask staff. That's a great way to sort of recap and get refocused if needed. Another one I'll just mention on this, I won't read all these, but you don't have to explain or apologize for the process or for your vote. All you have to do is be able to communicate, does the project meet the standards and why are you making your vote? But you don't have to say, well, I was the one no vote, so I want to give a speech about why that. You don't have to do that. The record speaks for itself. But it's hard in that moment to not want to do that. So we just encourage you all to just trust the process. You'll never be able to explain as much as you would like why you, you know, vote a certain way, as long as you're making your vote clear and you're communicating clearly. Do you think this project meets the standards or not? You should be in good order.
Yeah, and I would say as kind of a, maybe a simple tip, and I find this maybe is more helpful with commissioners who've, you know, haven't been on that many times, haven't had a lot of quasi-judicial matters in front of them, is it's okay to simply say, you know, I agree with the recommendation in the staff report, period. That's fine. It's fine to, you know, most of the items that we're going to see in planning commission, there's, you know, six criteria. If there's one that's bugging you or you don't see it, just say, yeah, I find it met all these others, but I don't find that it meets this. And that's fine too, at least legally sufficient to hold up in court. Currently, we have two 106 actions that have been filed against the city that are currently pending. And essentially, they're arguing that, you know, council didn't apply the correct criteria and that it was arbitrary. They made up criteria. You know, and so that's why it's important to kind of stick to staff's presentation. It was mentioned earlier. You can just say you agree with the staff report, or you don't. And not get, you know, hung up trying to go through every criteria and try to explain your rationale for believing this and or not believing that. So that's kind of maybe my simple rule of thumb that I give all boards and commissions. That's my advice. And then as you feel more comfortable, then you can, you know, get into maybe those specific pieces of criteria that aren't, you know, coming to a head for you. So.
Thank you for saying it that way. That was much more succinct. That was great. Appreciate it. All right, let's dive into some scenarios at this point. So a citizen starts asking, a member of the public in the audience starts asking the applicant questions directly. What do you guys think? Is this acceptable? No, everybody's shaking their head no. Free speech doesn't mean you can say whatever you want, whenever you want. You have to follow the process. So that's great. Thanks. All right, the next one. An opponent of a project challenges the time limit, saying that she needs her full time to provide her testimony. So chair, what do you do? And you don't have to be the sole person to answer this, but do you thank her for her testimony? Remind her there's a time limit? We've got to follow the rules consistently? Do you give her one more? Do you give her one more minute? I'll tell you honestly, there are some communities that follow to the letter every time, and there are some communities that say, "It's not worth really upsetting people. We'll give them an extra 15 seconds, or 30 seconds at most, because we want them to be able to finish their thought." That's up to you guys and your attorney and your staff to decide. But as long as you're consistent every time, you should be okay. The one thing that we do see that is really gets out of hand, I don't know if you have this, is I'll come up and say, "I'm going to give my time, and he's gonna give his time to this one person." And we see a lot of communities, just no way. We're, no, we're not doing that. Because then you're incentivizing people to bring their neighbors, informed or not, just so they can use their time and speak longer. Okay.
I would say from time, time to time, we have, all right.
No, that's fine.
From time to time, we have given perhaps a group of citizens, like an HOA, a little bit longer. It depends on what the issue, and it depends on how many individuals we would have. But that is something that our chairperson could decide, you know, as opposed to having, you know, 30 people come up and say the exact same thing, give them an extra few minutes, and, yes, just for efficiency purposes.
No, that's good. Yeah, I hadn't really thought about that exception. That's good. All right, what about when the chair asks people not to repeat testimony, but as Reed was just saying, it happens, right? People will come up and say the same thing as the last person. And frankly, there, most people don't think they're saying the same thing as the last person. They feel like they've got a little different spin, or a different nuance on it. And I, you know, there are some people that will cut that person off, but for the most part, we see a lot of grace being shown, let people, hey, they, they took the time to come down here and speak in front of you, or online, and you just kind of let them do it. You guys are all nodding. I think you're already there. All right, what about this one? Someone testifies and argues your point, or contradicts you. Do you engage in a debate? Do you want to make sure your point is heard? So no, you're not there to win people over to your viewpoint. You're there to hear and consider all the facts. Or, hey, the record has to be clear, who's right, whose facts are correct. Or C, no, avoid a debate, but when the testimony is complete, restate your point concisely to avoid confusion. I'll say that last one feels tempting, right? But probably not helpful in the end. But it's tempting. It's very frustrating when people hear you wrong or hear what they want to hear. Okay, so that one's A. All right, how about this one? It becomes clear the planning commission really has to deny the project. The applicant feels she's not been treated fairly, implies she may sue. What should you do? Does anybody want to take a guess on this one? A, approve the project, but with lots of conditions that you hope she won't be able to meet, so you don't have to deny it. B, make sure the motion, be sure the motion used to deny the project is clear, and the staff report and discussion clearly lays out which standards were not met, or deny the project. But call later, talk to her about it. Okay, I saw some nodding on B. That's a good one. This, uh, these are real scenarios. People have done these things. So.
Yeah, I would say generally in regard to that last scenario, I, I wouldn't talk with an applicant afterwards. I wouldn't call them up, because if they are intent on suing the city, then they could use anything that you're telling them as part of their argument in terms of suing this, so. Yeah, every once in a while, we'll have, you know, kind of a side conversation with an applicant afterwards, and that's generally fine, but it's, probably wouldn't be setting up a lunch date with them afterwards if they were that upset about it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next one is, the applicant claims the planning commission's decision has essentially removed the highest and best use of their property. Is that a reasonable expectation? Has everyone afforded the highest and best use of their property? I think a lot of people will argue that because they hear that and they think that that's how this works. But, no, there's plenty of case law that supports, no one has, should expect the highest and best use. But they, they should expect, and you should protect, a reasonable use of their property. All right, I'm gonna switch gears now to the last section, the legal and ethicals piece, ethical issues piece. And again, when you're wearing your quasi judicial hat, that's when this extra layer of due process comes into play, and you really want to make sure you're aware of which hat you're wearing when you're deciding whether or not you can talk to someone at the grocery store, or so on. So let's dive into, I think you guys know most of this. Let's dive into ex parte contacts. Have you heard this term before, ex parte? Okay. So an ex parte contact, for most of you, just as a refresher, it's any written or verbal communication. So it is if someone stops you at the grocery store, or when you're out at the bar, or at a PTO meeting, or you get an email, or a phone call. It just goes on and on, right? Any communication that happens outside of the noticed public hearing, that's an ex parte contact. Especially if they seek to influence or present information. If they're seeking to influence your vote outside of the public hearing, then everybody else, the applicant, the folks that, neighbors, and others that show up, your fellow planning commission members, aren't hearing that same information at the same time. And that's what due process partly is about, right? Making sure that it's clear how decisions are made, that we're giving people a meaningful opportunity to participate, and that they understand how decisions are being made. So, every, every bit of information that you use to make a decision should come from your packet and from the public hearing itself. So, let's go on to what do you do when it happens? So if someone does stop you at the grocery store, and they say, "Oh, Sherri, I can't come to the meeting Thursday night. You know, that's when The Bachelor is on. That's my thing. That's my jam. So, I'm sorry, I don't actually know if that show is still on, and if it in fact takes place on Thursdays. But, I can't come to the public hearing, and I really just want you to know that that project that you guys are gonna hear is gonna cause a ton of traffic problems in our neighborhood." Basically, you've just had an ex parte conversation. You didn't open your mouth, but they gave you information that your fellow planning commission members and others didn't get a chance to hear. Now that's very little information. So hopefully, at that point, or before that point, you stop the person, and you say, "Look, I'm sorry, but I can't talk to you about this, because this project is up for the public hearing, as you know. And if you want me to be able to vote on this project, I can't have this conversation with you. It's not ethical. It's not legal." And then, the next thing you do, oh, well, and then you tell them, "Please come to the public hearing, provide input. If you can't, send it to staff, so that they can put it on the record." And then the next thing you do is call staff and say, or email and say, "Ah, sorry, but someone stopped me at the grocery store, and they gave me quite an earful before I could stop them. Some people saw. Maybe someone thinks I was having a long conversation. I wasn't. This is all that they said." And then staff can advise you whether or not you need to formally disclose it. In many cases, you do. At the public hearing, you disclose it. You say, "Oh, someone stopped me at the store, and they said this, and now you have all the same information I have, and we can proceed." But that conversation with staff is a good check-in point. One, so they're not surprised and freaking out when you disclose, or don't disclose, or the applicant says, "Oh, yeah, I saw Sherri. We had a great conversation before this meeting." You know, that puts the whole decision in jeopardy. So, that conversation with staff is a good chance to check in, see how serious it is, see what the next steps are. Let them advise you. Yeah, question?
You had a, you made a point that it would be a noticed public hearing, or something that's actually on the schedule, so it's, it's in the process. But what if, say, you know, a couple of years ahead of a, a submittal, they haven't even submitted it yet, they're developing an idea, and a developer approaches the commissioner and says, "Hey, you know, I'd just like to show you some of these ideas, bounce it off you." How do you, how do you react to something like that?
That happens a lot, right? And you want, you're a champion for land use, and you want to be informed and engaged. So that, I'll punt this to Reed, because he's your attorney, and that's the most important thing. But I will make the point that sometimes public perception is just as important as the legal reality. And, you know, a lot of folks figure we make all our decisions based on backroom deals and whatever. And so, having that kind of early information early on sometimes contributes to that. So, at the very least, we would just say be cautious. Because when that project evolves, and evolves over time, and finally gets before you, then you'll have your chance to get all the details. But I will punt it to Reed, because I, I know that's one where different attorneys come down differently.
No, I think that's well said, and that is something to be thoughtful of. I know that we've had, you know, fortunately for us in the city, we have what's called a P4 process, which allows for applicants to come before planning commission and city council with kind of a mock-up, if you will, a sketch plan, if you will, to kind of get direction and get thoughts before they start investing in, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars doing real design work on things. So we do have kind of an informal process. But yeah, a lot of developers are gonna seek out some input from, from planning commission. Ask them, "Well, you know, how, how does this look to you, or what'd you think about this?" And, you know, they're relying on your expertise, sitting on planning commission to help guide them. But I think, yeah, perception is kind of reality for some, and so probably just to be thoughtful in terms of how that might look if, you know, you're having lunch with someone, and developers go in these plans, and then, you know, one of our constituents sees you sitting there, you know, kind of hobnobbing. So know that it's there. But yeah, just be thoughtful in that process.
If I can add one thing, I mean, this, this is the big reason that we have the development activity list, and that we also send you guys an email that lets you know we have received an application. I know you're talking about years ahead, but we at least have that kind of stopgap measure.
Yeah, in fact, you'll see shortly, I love that so much that you guys do that. I put this in the slideshow and tell all the other communities in the state to do that, because we get that question a lot. Like, well, at what point, then? A lot of attorneys will say, "At the point that an application is turned in, that's when all the ex parte kind of rules start to apply, technically, legally." But how do, most folks don't know until they look at their packet, which is often just a few days before the hearing. So I think that's a great tool. I love that Littleton uses that. I will say, if you do need to disclose, if you do have an actual ex parte contact, and maybe you do get a little too much information, and it starts to feel like you're feeling a little biased, or the perception is just too strong to fight, and it would cloud the decision, then, you know, you definitely want to talk to staff, and then disclose it, and then you leave the room. That's really the best policy. And then just make sure someone remembers to get you and bring you back in when you go to the next piece. I know Chaffey County for years has had a nice little note about this, right on the webpage where developers get the application. I think it's great. There will be some who will continue to ignore it. We've had developers tell us, "We know about ex parte. We're gonna do it anyway. We're gonna talk to your planning commission. We're gonna talk to your council, because we're trying to get our votes. We want predictability." And if your process is highly predictable and fair, I think you see a little bit less of that. But if it starts to feel like it's an anything goes negotiation, you get more of that, because people are trying to manage their risk.
And I would say, you know, one of the things that is probably, we see the absolute most on is email communications. So, mostly in front of city council. But we'll have citizens who will send emails, dozens of emails, to planning commissioners or city council on items that are upcoming. And so you normally have kind of some canned language that I suggest, you know, "Thanks for your email. Unfortunately, I can't discuss this before your email to be part of public comment." But one of the things, it's kind of an education piece. So citizens believe that, not in our commissioner's case, but in council's case, "I elected you. So yes, you are gonna talk to me about this, and I don't care what you say." And that's something that I think council members in particular, and I'm sure commissioners struggle with, just in terms of how to respond back to a citizen who makes contact with you. You know, a legal argument can't be made that, you know, you as a commissioner, you've received a thousand emails against a particular project. And you go up to plan, you go up for the actual public hearing, you vote no on the project. You know, an applicant could argue that, "Of course you voted no. You got a thousand emails from people, you know, telling you to vote no on this." And so that's an argument that can sometimes be framed, where the argument is, is that, you know, you prejudge the issue. You bias the issue. And so I always caution boards and commissions and councils not to respond to those emails outside the canned email. Don't read the email. If you get an email from a constituent, you know, just send it to, you know, in this case, you know, send it to Jennifer, send it to Wendy, our clerk. And we can put that in the public packet so that everyone has that information. But that is certainly probably the biggest issue that we run into is, you know, getting all these emails and trying to educate our citizens that you just can't, you can't talk about it.
Right. No, that's good. I think, I think people get it when you turn it on for them, right? Like, you want me to hear you outside of the public hearing, but would you want me to hear somebody else outside the public hearing? And I think that kind of opens people's eyes sometimes, like, "Oh, yeah, wait, no. I don't want you to just be able to talk to anybody at any time. I want to know what people are telling you, and likewise."
I also like that, that idea of disclosure. So, you know, when you go up in a public hearing, you know, I think it's important for a council to say, "Yeah, trust me, I," or for commissioners, "Say I've received, you know, dozens of emails, you know. I haven't read the emails. I forwarded them to the city clerk. It's not gonna, you know, affect my ability to be fair and impartial and apply, you know, the facts of the criteria." So I think that sort of disclosure is, is usually warranted, depending on the level of bombardment, I guess, you all have had. So.
That's good. Good advice. Do you find you get more than 20, 30 emails on big projects pretty regular? Yeah, sometimes. Fun. All right. Okay, well, let's talk about site visits. And again, at the end, it's really up to your legal staff to decide what they will allow. But, you know, we get a lot of folks that talk about how important site visits are, especially in some cases where you really need to feel how the site works, how it's accessed, whatever. Sometimes you just need to go and check it out. And we get folks who say, "I gotta get out of my car sometimes." I mean, drive-by site visits are great, but sometimes you gotta get out of your car. You gotta park, you gotta get out. Oh, there's a gate. Now somebody's letting you in. Oh, that's the owner's rep. Okay, now what do I do? You're, when you do have site visits, you do tend to open yourself up to ex parte contacts, or perceived ex parte contacts. So this scenario is just that situation. People see you walking around with the owner's rep, or with the owner themselves, walking around the property, and maybe they're talking to you about their project, and maybe they're not. But the perception could be that you're getting a personal tour, and you must be friends with this person, or in on it, or whatever. So, does anybody want to take a guess which one you'd go for?
Let's be, but, yeah, we, we have disclosure here. We go around and ask everybody before a public hearing whether they visited the site, if they spoke with anybody. So they have an opportunity to do the, unless I forget, then you guys remind me.
We had a, one local government that was so worried about it, they banned even drive-by site visits, and used Google Earth, excuse me, to fly through the project.
And I'm generally, you know, I'm in, I'm in favor of, of site visits, because it provides maybe just some more context, you know, about where this development will, will go. I know it's not part of the, the public hearing, but, you know, Littleton's such a, a small town. You know, we're pretty much familiar with all these places as it is. Where I've cautioned folks in, in the past, and granted, yes, don't talk with an applicant, is, you know, and this is probably more particularly true with Board of Adjustment. So a lot of times they're doing variances on fences, or, you know, putting a garage close to setbacks, or within setbacks. And I've always been a little bit more cautious about how close you're going to get for planning commission. You know, generally, you know, parking across the street is fine. But there are some that have been a little overzealous and have gone on to the property. That can be concerning, because say, property owner may not that can be concerning because a property owner may not know you and generally may not want you peering over the fence. So I don't think that'd be a concern for our commission though.
That's a good point, too. Did you have something you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. All right, great. Yes.
I was make a comment about the ex parte communication upon thinking about it, but a potentially helpful suggestion to somebody is if they're intent on speaking with you in an ex parte fashion, you remind them that if they persist, you might have to recuse yourself from the vote, which on occasion, when that's come up, people tend to sort of back off because they, and you invite them to, again, you know, provide public comment and information so that everybody hears the same thing. But if, it doesn't do anybody any good if you have to recuse yourself and they're trying to influence how you're viewing a particular application.
That's right. Thank you. Very well said. Unless they're trying to get you to not vote. They know exactly what they're doing. But yeah, most of the time, they're trying to convince you, so. All right, well, let's cover conflicts of interest. Have you ever had anybody say, well, you can't vote on this. I mean, you've never liked that applicant, you've always made it clear. Or that's your church, you live on that street, you live in that neighborhood, whatever. Have you ever been sort of accused of that or hinted at that? I feel like most times when people say there's a conflict, they're actually talking about a bias. And so I just want to make that distinction first. And in this case, we're going to talk about conflict as in a conflict of interest, as in you have a personal or private interest, you stand to gain or lose money in your immediate family based on the matter in front of you. So if that's the case, if you have a conflict of interest in that case, you disclose to staff first early, make sure they agree. Sometimes we're too conservative in how we judge that and other times we're not conservative enough. So if you're even a little bit wondering, talk to staff before the hearing and really kind of understand that a little bit better. And then if you do actually have a conflict of interest, of course you don't vote. You disclose it and then you leave the room and hopefully they'll remember to come back in and get you. I doubt that this would ever happen here, but just for fun, I'll share that it's surprising how often we hear a Planning Commissioner will come down and present their project to their fellow Planning Commission members. That happens a lot. And so that's really concerning, of course, because of the obvious conflict, but also just because how awkward it then is for everyone else because they're going to have a hard time asking certain questions or whatever, right? So that's, I think, really interesting. You know, that same sort of awkwardness rule might apply in some other cases, too, that we can talk about. But let's, let's go to an ethical scenario. I know we don't have a lot of time left, so I want to sneak a few more of these in. So an applicant claims that one of you has a conflict of interest because they always vote no on her projects. Is this a conflict? Is it a bias? It's a perceived bias. So if somebody were accusing me of this perceived bias, I would make sure that that motion and everything about my questions and everything was squeaky clean and very careful so that that charge or that accusation would have no grounds, no fuel. All right. What about if you're convinced a fellow Planning Commissioner has an actual conflict of interest and they're not saying anything? What do you do? That's just a little bit awkward. And this happens, by the way, all the time because I get calls. Most Planning Commissioners think they're on the same page about all these little gray areas because there are a thousand of them. And so what do you do? Do you talk to the Planning Commissioner beforehand? Do you talk to staff for guidance? Do you set up an informal meeting with a few other Planning Commissioners to talk it out? Do you raise your concern in the Planning Commission meeting before that proposal is heard? Anybody want to venture a guess?
Ask Reed.
Great. Yeah, we encourage you to talk to staff for guidance. Or if you have a strong relationship with that person, you can talk to that one Planning Commission member. But you know what happens, too, right? If you engage a lot of people in an email discussion, you're basically having an unnoticed public meeting. So you definitely don't want to do that. I'm going to, oh, yes.
I'd make it the chair's problem.
So ask the chair to address it? How nice.
Thanks, Bruce.
All right. You know, open meetings, I don't cover too much because I feel like, especially in a city this size, you have staff that really keep you on task and keep everything very compliant. I think, I know you guys have had some training in the past, some really great training about, you know, the very scenario I just mentioned where you, maybe you want to email the whole group a question or something like that. You're, you know, you might be violating some rules around open meetings. So I think staff does a great job of keeping everybody in the clear on that. But let's, let's just do a fun ethical scenario here. Most Planning Commissions that I've talked with really love the idea of having this beer after the Planning Commission hearing. Because let's face it, that would be great. It would help you, it helps Planning Commissions and councils function better if they have strong relationships, understand each other well, talk a lot. But that just opens the door for the potential for public business to be discussed outside of a noticed public meeting. So we do get this scenario a fair bit. So maybe after a really rough public hearing, you're here till 10, 10:30, people have been yelling at you all night, you want to go grab a drink at the newest bar that I just discovered downtown, the Lazy Greyhound, very cool. Any issues or concerns? That's just because I have a Greyhound probably too, right? So this could be seen as an unnoticed public meeting. The perception could be this is where the real work is done and how decisions are made. Or is it okay after a public hearing, but not before?
It may be more helpful if it was during the public hearing.
That would help everyone relax and unwind during the meeting. All right, that's good. We do hear sometimes, well, we can do it after, right? But it depends. There's the perception issue we've been talking about all night. You know, if the Planning Commission all goes to the bar after, they're like, oh, that's where the work gets done. That's where they, they're pretty chummy and, okay, great, I see how this works. Or what if a decision goes to the council and then they send it back to you? You just had an ex parte contact, you might have talked about the hearing after you had it. Again, I'll leave that up to your staff and Reed to decide how you guys want to come down on that. But I think the rules are pretty strict here in Littleton, as I recall, that we don't really do that, which is kind of a bummer because those relationship building elements are really important, but it's the right thing. Okay.
My guidance on that one is I don't necessarily have an issue with that as long as it's, you know, purely social, you know, kind of these chance run-ins. We have, you know, such a small community that we're oftentimes, you know, there's more than three council members or commissioners in a particular location. And as long as we're not getting into kind of the public business, then, you know, there are exceptions for it under the open meetings law, so have fun.
Oh, that's good. Not, not all attorneys are so relaxed. That's great. How many of you so far have been yelled at, maybe by an applicant who says, I can't believe you just turned down my project. I'm going to sue the city and I'm going to sue you, you, and you because you voted no. Does that happen to anybody yet? No? Great, maybe? Yes?
In my role as staff, yes.
Okay. Well, if that could happen, no one would ever serve on a board, right? I mean, no one would take on that risk personally. So luckily we have the Governmental Immunity Act to protect us from that kind of a threat. As long as you're acting within your scope of authority, and I don't know if you can see my slides, but here are the reasons why you might lose that immunity. So that covers you unless you prejudge, and we've talked about the 100 different ways you can accidentally show that you've prejudged a matter. If you engage in an ex parte contact, also very easy to do if people are purposely trying to get to talk to you about a matter outside the public hearing. If you make a decision that clearly violates established laws or you act beyond your scope of authority, asking for requirements that you don't have on the books. If you, Reed will like this one especially, if you ignore or go against publicly given legal advice, then you can lose your immunity. And so these are the ways that you can lose that immunity. But otherwise, as long as you're doing your best to follow your rules, you are protected and you need that to make sure that, you know, that we can keep our boards. All right. I'm going to skip that one. Let's do this one. Okay, and I'm actually really interested to hear what Reed might weigh in on this one as well. So after the vote at a Planning Commission hearing, a Planning Commission member decides to testify at the City Council meeting, forgive me, I usually do these for larger groups, so I try to intersperse town board, county commissioner, and so on. So after a hearing, you want to go testify at the council meeting, is this okay? You want to represent the minority opinion. You want to make sure that they really understand all the issues that were raised, you know, contrary to the way it was finally voted. So A, you don't give up your right to testify as a citizen. It can be helpful for the board to hear your perspective and benefit from your insight and experience. B, it can be divisive to allow the losing side of the Planning Commission vote to essentially appeal their decision to the town board directly. It sets up a more politicized win-lose dynamic. Or C, if the town board remands the decision back to the Planning Commission to reconsider the proposal, then you would not be allowed to hear the matter because you had an ex parte contact just by attending that council meeting. Has this happened before? Have you guys felt like, gosh, I really wish I could go to that council meeting and explain? It's, I find most people want to be able to do that. And I'd be curious to hear Reed's take on this. I know a lot of communities try to dissuade for some of the reasons that are in this scenario. Reed, do you want to weigh in?
It's a, it's a slippery slope. I would say one of the concerns that we've had is when we have a particular board member going before council in fear that they're necessarily representing the entire board or they're speaking on behalf of that board and not them as a particular, you know, an individual citizen. I would have concerns that in your scenario where a member of Planning Commission who voted no on something goes forward to council to provide their input, that, you know, they're applying things that, you know, may not have come forward during the City Council meeting, but applying things other than their vote that they heard at Planning Commission. I would have concerns that perhaps by them advocating for the opposite position that the rest of the commissioners did, that they're somehow undermining or being critical of what another commissioner had done or what the board had done or the commission as a whole. And those would be things that we would try to stay away from. So I would probably not want to do that, especially acting in a quasi judicial capacity going forward and basically making yourself a witness, if you will, to the other public hearing. So just my thoughts. What have you seen?
We see it happen all the time and we, I like all the points that you made. It's, it can be really problematic based on the, a lot of the points that were made on the slide. It can politicize things quickly and once an applicant or future applicant or a stakeholder group realizes that there's divisiveness on a Planning Commission, they can use that sometimes to their advantage to try to get future votes. So I think it's incredibly tempting, but we discourage it as well. Do you guys have any other thoughts, please?
Yeah, I think, I've been taught to try to get it in the record, you know, announce the reasons why supporter opposed something when making the voter and supporter against whatever action is being taken. That way it's, it's in the record and our work here is done. I have seen it done slightly differently in a jurisdiction in Colorado where a City Council member showed up to testify at the Planning Commission in favor of a project and that City Council member was not present at all during the City Council meetings when that project came before them after speaking with the town attorney.
That's good. You see, that was my next one. That's good. Yes.
The other, I think, advantage we have in this context is we video record these meetings and the council meetings. And so hypothetically, if someone wants to watch a hearing, they can go back and review, as Jason suggested, the record. And it sort of obviates the need for hypothetically, any individual commissioner going before council to explain something they, the council members, if they're so inclined, can see what was discussed at the meeting and draw their own conclusion or not, as the case may be.
That's good. Thank you. All right. Well, that's kind of a fun one because I know, I think we all probably at some point or another would like to have testified and added our two cents, but in a sense, you already have, well, not in a sense, you do already have way more influence than any other member of the public does because you're up here. And so that is your extra influence. You don't necessarily need to then add on more. But I like this scenario as well, the elected official is just as problematic for a variety of reasons. I know we're over time, so I'm just going to very quickly give you a little update. We have a program funded by stimulus funds that we're pretty excited about. It's incredibly flexible housing development funds. And to qualify to get the housing development funds or housing program funds, you have to qualify. And to qualify, you have to adopt three of these strategies. Now, you guys just went through your land use code update and so, you know, the timing is not ideal for you all, but if, if that's an area where the city is trying to go next, we would love to help you fund some of this work, especially where the comp plan has already laid the groundwork. Maybe your current now code has gotten you real close to some of these. But if this is something that is important to the city and you want help, we'd love to fund this planning work so that we can then help you fund some housing development work. And the housing and construction money, if you will, the incentive grants are, like I said, incredibly flexible. So for instance, in this affordable housing project, that, that money could be spent on helping to buy down the infrastructure costs for the developer. It could help put on solar panels. It could build the trail connectivity to a park or a school. It could actually build the construction of the housing. It's, it's, it's very flexible and it can even be used off-site in the neighborhood so that the housing project brings investment to the neighborhood, especially where there are long-held inequities. So I wanted to take a moment to tell you about it just because it is so different and we're really excited about the power that that program has. Would love to talk to you about it. I have talked to some staff members already, but as Planning Commission members, if you're interested, happy to talk about it. So, I mean, that's basically the presentation. Thank you so much for spending another evening, another evening, you already do a lot, but another evening getting training. I skipped some of the scenarios. So if you look through the slides, and I actually updated it a little bit before I came here tonight, but if you see some scenarios that we didn't cover that you want to cover, bring them up to staff and maybe in your next session, you can talk about them. Or better yet, think about some of your own scenarios you've been wanting to ask. And feel free to ask them either now, you've got staff here or at your next meeting. And then we, just a final thought, these are folks that we encourage you all to meet with in the future if you haven't already. As a Planning Commission, you're always thinking both what's coming before me in current review and what's on the, the long-range view. And so these are great folks to hear from, to inform some of your thinking. And if you do have any follow-up questions... And if you do have any follow-up questions, Casey McPherson, like I said, is our senior planner, she's the legal expert, and so she's really the best person to ask all those great questions, but thank you, Reed, for being here to help with those, and Jennifer as well. Any final questions? Maybe even for each other or for your staff?
I guess in terms of the stimulus grant program that you're talking about, I think there's a number of things in our parking lot for the ULUC for zoning code that seem to be relevant that, I was wondering, is there a timeframe on spending and the grant applications and the spending on those?
To do the planning work, so that, you know, you come to the planning grant program, we have monthly cycles, so the next deadline, we just had a deadline, so the next deadline is January 10th. The application is super easy. It usually takes us a couple months to get those reviewed, awarded, and under contract. And then, we pay you basically to hire a consultant to attack one of those strategies or more and adopt, help you adopt them. Our next incentive grant cycle, the actual big money, we're talking like $3 million grants to put toward a project, that's going to be in the fall. So you are in a short timeline for sure, but it's possible.
So who may apply for those? Would it be governmental entities or the nonprofits apply?
You know, local governments only can apply, and frankly, that's just so that we didn't want to be, sort of pit the affordable housing developer or nonprofit against the local government. We wanted the local government to say, "This is a project that makes sense for our community, we want to support it, we're going to partner with our housing authority, pay for the infrastructure, whatever." So yeah, it has to be from the city. But you partner, obviously, with the housing, and just you can hand the money to a nonprofit developer or whoever.
Right, and we've had several conversations, actually, with Andy and then South Metro Housing Options, and I know you've talked to South Metro Housing Options, so we've already started that conversation. So, Mike and I, as well as some of the other planners, will be looking at what is our comparison, what has the comp plan, as well, do you all you see addressed in these qualifying strategies, and where are we still falling short?
Any other questions or discussion? If not, I'd like to thank Andy for a great presentation, thank you so much tonight.
Yep, thank you.
Any other commission business before we adjourn?
If I can just add a couple things, I hope you all received the notes from the meetings that we've had in October and November. Craig and myself and Mike and Sheri will be meeting again Wednesday, I think, of this week. So we just have those of just, you know, what is staff, are we seeing that's going to be coming down the pike, as well as, you know, what are you guys seeing that you feel like we need to address? I do want to give you a heads up that we have kind of scheduled you guys for a couple study sessions in January. Mike and I, as well as the other planners, have been working on a pretty extensive list of some things that are coming up in the ULUC that are just, we need some interpretation on, so Mike and I will be bringing those to you in January. So right now, we have two study sessions scheduled, and we're really trying to kind of get your input on that, so we can go to the council leadership retreat, which is going to be the 11th and 12th of February, with a complete list and your recommendations. So, just a heads up on that. So everyone read your ULUC from front to back, just kidding. But if you're hearing anything, you know, from our community, and that is a legislative issue, so you can have conversations about the ULUC, that is not ex parte, but, you know, if you're hearing things or seeing things, please bring them to Mike and my attention. So, Mike, do you have anything to add to that? I think he's frozen. Frozen with a smile on his face.
No, that's perfect.
Oh, wait, try again, Mike, I think you're frozen.
He moved.
It's perfect.
Okay, perfect. His wife, I guess, a little touchy at night. All the kids are sucking up the bandwidth.
So, yeah, so those upcoming activities in January and February, I think, are in the notes that you received, and if you have any questions or have any other questions for staff, that's an opportunity for us to ask those questions and sort of identify issues that we should put on future study session agendas. So feel free to reach out to myself or Sheri, we attend those on a monthly basis.
Reed, do you have anything to add?
Nope. Just thank you, Andy.
Well, with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Happy holidays to everyone, and thanks for a productive year.
Yeah, very.